Good evening and welcome to the July 20th meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. I was derelict in my duties this evening and forgot to ask Don to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Would you mind? Would you please rise and join us in the pledge?
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the public with all its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Ms. Prinsby, the roll call, please.
Chair Rossler let the record reflect that all commissioners are present. All city council members are present.
Planning Commission is in place. Wow, we got elevated. Thank you. We get a raise? Thank you, Joanne. Commissioners, the next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from our July 6th meeting. If there's no changes to the minutes, can we hear a motion to approve? Commissioner Aguilar.
I just wanted to make one small correction. I think Rick Fellows, he was the neighbor that was there.
Yeah.
And it just says it's neutral, but I know he wanted to make a statement that he was supportive, however, he would not support any new expansion in the future, and I think that we should at least honor the man's request. So with that, I would recommend approval of the minutes with that adjustment.
Is there a second with Commissioner Aguilar's change to the minutes? Commissioner Garrison?
I second the motion.
Okay, very good. Is hand vote tonight? Okay. Commissioner Hastings' machine is still not working, so we'll do the hand vote. So we've moved and seconded to approve the minutes from July 6th with the change to Mr. Fellows' testimony. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. And six to zero with Commissioner Grimm abstaining because he was absent. All right. Next item on our agenda is agenda changes. Ms. Chow, any changes to tonight's agenda?
No changes tonight, thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Oral communication comes next. This is a time that the commission sets aside for members of the public to address the commission on items that are not on our agenda. I do not have a speaker slip for oral communications. Anyone wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, we will move on then to our public hearings. Our public hearing process goes as follows. Staff will make a presentation. The applicant will be given a chance to add on to that presentation with additional information or appear to answer questions. We'll open it up for questions from the commissioners of staff or the applicant. I will then open the public hearing. We will accept testimony. If you'd like to testify before the commission, you need to fill out a speaker slip and give it to our recording secretary, and she'll give it to me, and I usually call them in the order that I receive them. I'll close the public hearing. We'll have discussion amongst the commissioners. There will be a motion, and we will vote on that motion, and that'll conclude the item. So our first item on the agenda is item, Public Hearing 1, P-21-0124, Vista Energy Storage Modification. Mr. Wrestler, I believe the staff report is yours.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. The project before you tonight is a special use permit in a site development plan, minor modification for the Vista Energy Storage Project. Again, the application number is P-21-0124. The subject site is addressed at 552 Olive Avenue. The site is generally located southeast of the intersection of North Melrose Drive and Olive Avenue. The site is .88 acres, one legal parcel, and currently developed with the Vista Energy Storage Project. On October 4th of 2016, the Planning Commission approved P-16-0253, which was a special use permit inclusive of a site development plan for the development of the self-storage facility, excuse me, energy storage facility. The Vista Energy Storage Facility receives energy during low peak hours, stores the energy, and then disperses it and discharges it during high peak demand periods. The facility is interconnected with the Sandyogas and Electric Substation to the north. Vista Energy Storage stores lithium ion batteries and associated outdoor equipment. The facility is remotely operated, provides no emissions in terms of air or water, and the original project was approved in two phases. The first phase of development included a 7,736 square foot battery storage building towards the front of the site. Also included outdoor equipment to the north and south of the storage building, as well as a six to eight-foot tall perimeter wall surrounding the site. And the second phase of the development would include a second 24-foot tall metal battery enclosure building towards the rear of the site in a previous graded pad area. The project before you tonight includes a special use permit in the site development plan, minor modification. The project is for an alternative battery storage enclosure to replace the second 24-foot tall metal storage building on site. The proposal would include a maximum of six enclosures and associated inverters. That equipment would be located in the same location as the previously approved storage building, and the applicant is requesting an option of either building the previously approved building or installing these prefabricated enclosures. The submitted site plan indicates a total of six, 623 square foot storage enclosures, as well as inverters to the rear of the site. Although the staff report indicates seven total enclosures, the applicant has confirmed a maximum of six enclosures and an area dedicated for inverter enclosures. The submitted plans indicate the battery storage enclosures would maintain a maximum width of 53 feet, a total height of 10.75 feet, and a total width of 11.75 feet. And those freestanding enclosures would be constructed of metal and painted to match the existing storage building on site. The inverter enclosures would maintain dimensions of 5.25 feet wide, 9.25 feet long, 7.75 feet high, and these metal enclosures would also be painted to match the existing storage building on site. Here's a photo simulation of the existing site, as well as the proposed battery enclosure units to the rear of the site, as well as the inverters in front of the battery enclosures. In regards to zoning, the proposed enclosures would meet the maximum height limitations in the M1 zone, which is 35 feet. The project does comply with all setback requirements. The enclosures are architecturally compatible with the existing building. The existing perimeter walls would provide appropriate screening for surrounding properties, and the alternative enclosures are low-profile compared to the 24-foot tall storage building that was previously approved for the project. With that, staff is recommending approval of a resolution granting a minor modification to the previously approved special use permit and site development plan for an alternative battery enclosure design to replace the second battery enclosure building in Phase 2 of the existing energy storage facility at 552 Olive Avenue. And that concludes staff's report. Representatives of Vista Energy Storage are here to introduce themselves and to answer any questions you might have tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Since there's not a presentation from the applicant, any questions of staff or the applicant this evening? Commissioner Looney?
Yeah, a question for staff. Are they proposing a new building, or are they just proposing the storage containers?
They're purpose-built containers. They're proposing to either install six of those containers in the same location as the previously approved building in the second phase of the development, or they're still trying to maintain the entitlement to actually build that building. They want the flexibility of either going either direction. These containers provide them flexibility in terms of the number of units they can do, the timing that they do it, as well as it's a cost-effective approach as well.
Because the buildings are 26 feet tall, and the containers are 11 feet tall.
The buildings 24?
So they're wanting the flexibility of doing both?
No, they would either do a 24-foot tall building, or they would do the 11-point-75-foot tall enclosure, excuse me.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Michael, it seems the last time they were here for their original approvals, I brought up the issue of the blank wall on the east side and the potential for our local artists to decorate it. Have they been tagged at all since they opened?
No, I haven't noticed it. The applicant might be able to answer a little bit more on that. We did, in fact, require them to put those arch elements in order to enhance that wall. I think they did an anti-graffiti coating on there as well, so they might be able to expand on that further, but as far as staff's concerned, we haven't seen a major issue in regards to graffiti on that wall.
Mr. Gilliland?
Yes. Has your building been tagged?
My name's Kevin Johnson with Vista Energy Storage. We had some initial minor tagging on the front wall facing Olive Avenue, which was corrected as actually around the gate structure, but it was minor, and the anti-tagging coating that's on there helped significantly, cleaned it up right away, and it wasn't an issue.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. I have no speaker slips on this item. Is anyone wishing to address the commission on the item? If not, I will close the public hearing and open it up to Commissioner Discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Garrison. I keep hitting the wrong button here. I've only been doing this eight years.
It's been a year. We've got a little while.
So these enclosures would actually be closer to the residence than the building would be, but the building would be taller, is that correct?
Actually, the building would be taller, and the setbacks are relatively the same. The setback on the east side would actually be three feet. The building would have a zero-foot setback along the industrial setback or property line. On the south or the rear property, it would maintain a 16-foot rear setback from the condominium development. Code requires a 15-foot setback there, and there would be a 21-foot setback to the west where the code requires a five-foot setback along that west.
The previous one was 30 feet.
The west setback was 30 feet. This would be 21 feet. However, the profile of these enclosures are 11.75 foot tall rather than 24-foot tall, so they're substantially smaller or shorter than the previously approved building.
I just want to make that point, that they may be a little closer, but they're going to be lower-profile.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Looney?
Two questions. Are there any, is there any noise generated from the batteries?
I've been told no. We haven't had any complaints associated with it. Again, you might want to have the applicant come up. I hope I heard you correctly, from the facility itself?
Do the batteries generate any noise?
No. I've been told in the previous presentation that was provided, it doesn't. I visited the site when they received a certificate of occupancy. There was no noise associated with the facility at that point, and I'm not aware of any at this point either.
Second question. Is there a city, or does a city require, on a minor modification, a specific building configuration prior to approval? Or does a city allow kind of a vague footprint that could either be 11 feet tall or 24 feet tall? Or is this unique to this site?
We've allowed for parameters in terms of future development within an area, and that's what this would be. We have a maximum height of 11-foot, 11.75 feet. We have a maximum area that's identified on that site plan. If the applicant comes in and proposes a shorter, smaller version of this project, we could approve it at staff's level. I think we have the ability to do so. But yeah, in the past, we have had the ability to have the Planning Commission approve parameters for future development.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Garrison, did I get your question? All right, very good. Very good. Any other questions? All right, would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Grimm?
Excuse me, I'll move staff recommendation.
All right. Commissioner Garrison? Second. All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the project according to staff's recommendation. All in favor, raise your hand, and the motion passes unanimously. All right, our next public hearing is P-21-0128, a variance at 1960 Los Lomas Road. As a matter of disclosure, I am not within 500 feet. I'm further than 500 feet, but this is in my neighborhood. It's just up the hill from where we live on Queen's Way, and I have no contact or knowledge of the project before it shows up here, so just to clarify that. Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. I didn't know that you were that close to the project site, or I might have given it a little more of a closer look, so thank you for disclosing that. This is a request for a setback variance at 1960 Los Lomas Road. The slide here shows a aerial of the site at a zoomed-out scale. It's one legal lot, 2.68 acres. You can see a couple of adjacent properties to the east that have been developed along the same road. Los Lomas takes access from Tierra del Cielo, which comes up from the south, and there's a private gate that provides access to the private road serving the property. It's zoned open space residential, which allows for residential uses with a minimum lot size of two and a half acres. The property, the subject property at 1960 was graded in 1989 with a grading permit. A copy of that permit was provided as part of the staff report. The original proposal was to establish a graded pad and build a single-family home with the freestanding rock walls that are placed on the site. Both the retaining and freestanding walls that are located on the property were issued permits in 1991 and finalized 10 years later in 2001. We don't have any exhibits, plans, or diagrams that show where those walls were purportedly to be located, but we have permits on file for the walls, so we're assuming they were built, you know, per building code. But the location of the walls doesn't meet the setbacks, and so that's why we're here tonight. This is a copy of the grading plan, which was provided in your packet. It shows essentially the same general pad arrangement as what's on the site today, with the exception of the location of some of the walls, which has been adjusted when the walls were constructed in the mid-'90s. But the existing configuration of the site, the pad, all the retaining walls and the freestanding walls are considered permitted by staff and so are constructable. General plan and zoning is shown on the slide, open space residential in both categories, which again is a residential rural designation for two-and-a-half-acre lot. In the OR zone, there are pretty significant development standards. Minimum lot size, I mentioned, is two-and-a-half acres. The setbacks required are 50 feet from all sides. That's front, rear, and side. There's also restrictions on the issuance of a variance within the OR zone to no less than 35 feet from any property line. It also requires a height limit of two stories or 35 feet within our development code. I've been told by the owner that there is also a private agreement between adjacent owners to limit the development of this property to one story, although the city's code and our review only applies to the zoning, which is two. So the project has requested a variance for the side yard setback of 50 feet for a new single-family home on the property. This would be the easterly side of the lot, where the setback would be reduced from 50 feet to 35 feet. All the other property line setbacks on the site would be met under the proposal that's been submitted by the applicant. They're proposing a single-family home that would be a one-story structure with a maximum height of 19 feet 4 inches. As I mentioned, all of the existing rock walls, both freestanding and retaining, would remain on the site and be utilized in the construction of the home. And a portion of the freestanding rock wall that exists within the 35-foot setback would remain, but be an enclosed patio area rather than part of the structure, which I'll expand on. The site plan provided by the applicant is shown here. You also have this in your packet, a scaled version. Yeah, you'll note the existing locations of the rock walls are shown, and the easterly rock wall that expands into the setback area. Upon the initial application of this project, we had some discussions with the property owner, recognizing that the existing rock wall is within the 35-foot setback, and there is no ability to vary beyond the 35-foot. The proposal came back to build the home at 35 feet, but leave the rock wall to enclose what would be an open patio area. Based on the size and extent of the walls on the site, which I'm guessing most of you have now seen, we feel it's reasonable to allow the applicant to maintain the walls within that setback as long as they're not part of the structure and are used just to enclose a patio area. The floor plan is provided here, also included in your packet, shows a general layout for a single-family home and the existing location of the rock walls. You'll note along the back, on the upper part of this diagram, along the back part of the property, it's, I'm not, is this working? Yeah. Right here would be generally the line of the home, and here's the wall behind it. So this area in here would be the enclosed patio area. There would be a wall here and some openings to get into the patio area, but that would be where the rock walls expand into the setback, based on their existing location. All the other portions of the structure would comply with our zoning and the setbacks. The roof plan is shown here, would be a flat roof on the left side with a sloped roof on the right side, maximum height, again, 19 feet 4 inches, single-family. These are elevations of the proposed structure, not really within our discretion based on the variance application and the fact that our zoning code does not have design standards for single-family homes, but they're provided here for your review as part of the variance You'll note the west elevation and the north elevation include some partially buried portions of the existing walls that act as retaining walls, but all, again, consistent with the approved grading plan. You'll also note in Section A up in the upper-left-hand corner, it shows the location of the home and the freestanding wall that would enclose the small patio area behind it. It gives a better indication right here, sorry, of where the encroachment would occur. So there are four variance findings that are required by our code. I'm not going to go through these individually, they're all listed in your packet, but they essentially call out that there are some exceptional or extraordinary circumstances that allow for this to happen, and it wouldn't negatively affect surrounding properties or provide some opportunity for this property owner that other property owners wouldn't have. The idea here is that it's not supposed to constitute a special privilege for the property that wouldn't be able to be shared by other property owners in the area, and then finally that it's supposed to be consistent with our general and specific plan that apply to the property. The staff reviewed the application. We've provided our findings in the staff report. In short, the staff's determination was that the existing development on the property, the topography and lot configuration create exceptional circumstances for the subject variance request. The neighboring property at 1966 Los Lomas was also granted a variance for a side yard setback of 35 feet for a similar purpose, to build a single-family home. The requested variance at 1960 would be similar to the adjacent property based on the topography and the lot shape and size, and as I mentioned, the project is consistent with the open space residential general plan designation, and there is no specific plan applicable to the site. So the staff recommendation is to grant a variance for building setbacks in the OR zone at 1960 Los Lomas, and I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Very good. Is the applicant here to make a presentation?
Mr. Bauer?
Just answer.
I'm here, but I don't think I can add to anything that John has presented.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Grimm?
Yeah, Mr. Conley, I see that the grading permit was issued in Vista. Was this an inherited subdivision from the county, or was this a Vista?
Was a Vista parcel map.
It was a Vista parcel map, okay. Thank you.
Good question, though.
Yeah. You could have lied to him.
Yeah. Commissioner Aguilar?
So the project's something like 19 feet in single-story?
Correct.
Is part of the proposal to limit it in the future to one story, so that in case they ever sell the place?
So that is an option that the Planning Commission can impose as a condition of the variance, I believe?
Good guess.
Yeah, so you could impose that as an additional condition. The staff did not include that, and our conditions of approval will be only focused on the setback issue.
Because I'm concerned, I mean, I understand the current neighbor directly behind them is supportive of the project, but they may not be there forever. Well, none of us will be here forever, right? And houses do change hands, so the only way I could support it is to limit it to a single-story home for the future.
Sure.
Because when I was up there, I mean, if they put a second story, that kills the view. I mean, it's just a view of a house for the people behind them. But other than that, I'm supportive of it.
Commissioner Looney?
Yeah, to go along with John's comment, I think there needs to be a height, because I've done 24-foot-high, single-story homes, and so I think if it's a single-story home, there needs to be maybe a maximum of 20 feet or 21 feet. That gives you some good wall heights and some good ceiling heights, but otherwise, you can create something 30 feet tall that's one story.
The existing proposal is for 19 feet 4 inches, so if you said 20 feet, I believe that would be sufficient.
In plan, it's almost as if there's an accessory dwelling unit that could work really well with a few tweaks. The garage, you're going to have some, if you've got some little cars, it'll be great to get in and out of one door. One of the other concerns that I had is the, I have no problem with the side yard setback being adjusted, but if the existing stone walls are to remain, I want it to show that the Planning Commission and the city has absolutely no responsibility for the structural integrity of those walls. They may be steel-reinforced, they may not be, but because there's no permit on some of the freestanding walls, I think the city needs to just exclude itself from being responsible for that.
Yeah, we would not take any responsibility for the structural integrity of the walls. That'll be the responsibility of the applicant at the time that they obtain a building permit for the home.
Other than that, you've got a killer lot with killer views. Other than that, you've got a killer lot with killer views.
Yes.
Make it worthwhile. Thank you.
Very good. Exciting adventure to get up there, too. Any questions over here? All right. Mr. Conley, when we do parcel maps today, it seems to me, I recall seeing the setbacks imposed on the maps, so we know what the development area will be. So lesson learned from way back when, I guess.
For sure.
Okay. And I had the same concern about the single-story. Mr. Bauer, any problems with the commission setting a 20-foot height limit on your approval?
It's going to be about 20 to 21 foot.
Come speak at the microphone, I'm sorry.
We're probably going to end up being about 20 to 21 foot, just based on the pitch of the roof, as far as the span, because we're trying to span about a 50-foot span. And in the CCNRs, it does state that it is, that only a single-story residence can be built on those five lots.
Okay.
So there is something, there is something governing the height.
The height of the structure, yeah.
Okay. It doesn't govern the height as far as, you know, 20 foot, 21 foot, or whatever, but it states that you can only build a single-story.
But you heard Commissioner Looney say that he's built structures.
Exactly, and I think if we could keep it at 21 foot, we'd be fine.
You can get two stories and 21 feet, but...
So we'll say a single-story and 21 feet.
That would be good.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? This is a public hearing. Again, I have no speaker slips. Anyone wishing to speak, come give your, come provide your testimony and then give your speaker slip to Ms. Preciby. Name an address?
Shelley Hoyseth, and address is 1960 Los Lomas. House right behind him. First, I want to thank Dave and Rebecca, because I do believe that they really have been working to stay within the CCNRs and protect our view and the community, and I really appreciate that. So I just have a couple of clarifying questions. I also appreciate Mr. Looney and Mr. Aguilar raising the question of the single-story. We do have CCNRs for those five lots that state, you know, they're kind of old, typewritten, but they do state they must be single-story and to provide no obstructions to others. So the two homes that are existing have approximate height of around 17 feet. Our home is about 17 foot, they're single-story. We do have very high ceilings, et cetera, for a nice stately home at a single-story around 17 feet. He has posted some polls at the 20 feet. They seem, you know, reasonable and okay. They don't seem to be, you know, causing any blocking. Our questions would be, could we put a cap on the height? 20, maybe, I guess 21?
21.
You think 21? We would probably be okay with that, because, as you said, while we appreciate them, we don't know who's going to, it might be passed on to. Also, we're wondering if there's a landscape plan regarding any trees that might be added to also block the view, and whether or not there's something that could be added where landscaping and tree height should match that 20 feet, because obviously our home's value is that view. So that's one question. The CCNR, there's also something mentioned about sprinklering, fire sprinklers, and our home is, there are fire sprinklers inside our home. I'm assuming our neighbor has them as well, because they're part of the agreement, or they were in the title. So I don't know if that's something that's a consideration or not. As far as the grading, it looks like on the plans, the grading is staying pretty much exactly like it is, which shouldn't affect the overall height. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And, oh, the map there shows that the retaining wall, which is a giant 30-inch-thick wall between our two properties, it shows it on 1960's side, but per the survey that we had done a couple of months ago, there is a portion, about 150 feet, that's on our property. And we don't have any objection to it becoming their property, but like you, I don't, we don't want any responsibility for that wall. From what we've heard, the way it was built, we don't, we don't, we don't know, you know, it looks like it's not going anywhere, ever. But I don't really want, we don't really want any responsibility for that retaining wall that goes along the property. It just encroaches in a couple of different areas as you come up the property and as you go down the property. So that would be a concern. The other concern is with the 35-foot variance, you know, our variance is one corner of the house. My concern are the walls that are existing. Does anybody know what the actual encroachment is? It's like, is it 19, 24?
I believe it's about 20.
About 20 feet?
From the property line.
So while we don't have a concern really with those walls right there and them using that as an atrium or a patio, I would just be concerned that someone in the future might consider that to be the variance, and then want to continue to build something somewhere else closer at that 19 or 20 feet, or, and also that maybe our neighbor above us, if they sell, and then the next person tries to do something that's 19 feet, which would basically be very close to our driveway area. I just want to make sure that it's a 35-foot variance and not a 20-foot encroachment, and therefore someone in the future could call that a 20-foot variance.
I'll address your questions when you're done. Are you done?
Okay, I think so. Those were the two, grading. And the road, obviously, will need to be widened, that's our understanding, that needs to be widened to 24 feet all the way up. The plan does mention that Los Lomas needs to be widened, but we did, the actual road is Tierra del Cielo and Los Lomas, which we understand. I know they understand that that's what it is. But I think it would be more plain if it was written out so in the approval of what roads specifically need to be widened. I think that's it. Was there any other questions we had? Yeah, okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, so I can go through these if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Mr. Conley to answer your questions.
So cap on the height, we've already discussed, could be 21 feet if the commission wants to impose that condition. With respect to landscaping, we do not require landscape plans for single-family homes. We also do not have the ability to restrict the height of landscaping on a private property. That would be an issue for their CCNRs or between the private owners. We can't impose that type of a condition. With respect to sprinklers, for fire, all new single-family homes require fire sprinklers, and this would be no exception. The grading plan is as-is. There will be some minor modifications potentially to address stormwater and structural requirements for the home, but as far as the grade of the pad, there's no proposed change to the grade of the pad based on what's been submitted. The retaining wall does encroach on the adjacent property, from what we've been told, but that's a private matter between the two owners to work through. It's not something the city really has any discretion in. We didn't confirm the location of the retaining walls when they were originally permitted. The wall within the setback, it's in the conditions and per the approval, if granted tonight, would be documented in our records. There's no way for us to go up there and check that they don't expand the structure into that area, but if the neighbors saw any construction, they could notify us, and we would have the ability through the variance to go up and confirm that construction is as was approved, and we could have them remove anything that was constructed within that area if it did occur. And then finally, the 24-foot-wide road, the fire department does require the road widening as a condition of the building permit, so I acknowledge in the staff report when I spoke to Ms. Hoyseth that it does say Los Lomas Road, but the fire department requires it to be 24 feet from any point back the road that's not 24, so it would continue all the way down to any portion of Tierra del Cielo as well.
Do we need to address that in a condition of approval, or the fire department has?
No, it's already a condition of the fire department's building permit, so they oversee that.
All right. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Conley. Commissioner Looney, did you have a question?
No, just a comment for the rest of the commissioners, that even though there is a setback, in this case, it's a rear yard setback, there are certain structures that are allowed. There cannot be any habitable structure that's a part of a living, you know, part of the living space, but there are several accessory structures that can go within that rear yard setback, so.
That's true.
All right. We opened the public hearing, had the testimony, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to Commissioner discussion. Any comments or questions, or? All right, then we'll move on to a motion. Would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Aguilar?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution granting a variance for building setbacks in the OR zone at 1960 Los Lomas Road with the condition of a single-story home limited to 21 feet.
And I'll second that.
And it's been seconded, all right. We have a motion and a second to approve the variance with single-story and 21 feet. All in favor, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Bauer. Enjoy your view up there. Very good. All right, moving on, the next item on our agenda are reports or comments from commission members. Any comments or reports from the commissioners? And we'll move on to Mr. Conley's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do not have a meeting on the 3rd of August, which would be our next regularly scheduled meeting. Looks like we will have a meeting on the 17th, so that's the next one to mark your calendars for. You, you have, we have a council meeting on the 10th of August. There will probably be a land use general plan request in front of the council to discuss. As you know, we bring all these GPA requests before the council. There is one that's looking at Kwahomi and Lotto de Loma, where the Pheasant Hills specific plan was, if you remember that small subdivision that came before us a few years ago. They're looking at doing an amendment to that and increasing some density, so that'll go to the council for discussion. Just want to make sure the commission's aware of those discussion items, since they do affect land use issues that ultimately come before you, so if you're interested, you can watch. Other than that, I don't have anything. Patsey, you got anything to add? That's really all I have for now.
Okay, very good. If there's nothing else from the commissioners, we will stand adjourn until August 17.